I'd like to call the Monday, January 24th, 2022 School Board Meeting to order. Lisa, can you call the row?
Inspector Arndt?
Here.
Inspector Felton?
Here.
Inspector Roche?
Here.
Inspector Weber?
Here.
Inspector Lalaberty?
Here.
Inspector Walker?
Here.
Chair Diaz?
Here.
At seven present at six o'clock.
Great, and if we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So first, we have the approval of our meeting agenda in minutes, and I'm looking for a motion to approve our meeting agenda for tonight, as well as the meeting from our January 10th Committee of the Home Meeting and our January 10th School Board Regular Meeting Minutes. Do you have a motion?
It's all moved.
Okay, thank you.
Take it.
Your fall, and any discussion? And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? My motion carries. And now, we move into a Calling in Action Report. Ben Kush is here, and Dr. Chad Schmidt.
Yes, good evening Chair Diaz, members of the board, Superintendent Webb, and South St. Paul Community. It is my distinct pleasure to introduce this quality in action of our tri-district Career and College Readiness Program. So with me tonight is Lead Designer Ben Kush, and he's brought some students who will share their experiences in the program. So here is Mr. Kush.
All right, so Chair Diaz and Superintendent Webb, members of the board, again, thank you for the opportunity tonight. It's been a minute since last we spoke.
Yeah.
So it's good to be back, happy to be here, even more so to not be alone. As Chad mentioned, we've got some students here to talk a little bit about what's going on with tri-district CAPS. As you recall, tri-district CAPS acronym, Center for Advanced Professional Studies. Four programs that we're currently offering, three of them from a tri-district perspective, that's the Business and Entrepreneurship, Healthcare, Careers in Medicine, and Transportation Technologies courses. Add a unique one to South St. Paul, but one that we have at other sites within the tri-district is our Introduction to Urban Education, or kind of a teacher explorer program, if you will. And then kind of a cool look ahead, something I've been working with, with Chad and Chuck and others across the tri-district, their job alikes, along with Superintendent Webb and his job alikes, are a Computer Science and Information Technology program that we're looking to, I believe you all took a look at it a couple of weeks back, gave it the thumbs up, and looking forward to rolling that out as we step into the registration process for the 2223 school year. Very briefly, just a reminder of our CAPS program overview and what that looks like. You can see we're a year-long course divided into semesters, some aspects, some kind of unique aspects to each of those terms. We're at kind of a cool inflection point right now. We spent the better part of, you know, a couple of weeks before the holiday break, and here these last couple of weeks following the winter break, getting ready for that spring semester and the internship opportunity that comes with it. And our students will talk about both of those things, and what both the fall and the spring semester have looked, what the fall semester has looked like and what the spring semester will hold for them. I'd like to invite up Quinn Shannon to talk a little bit about our Business and Entrepreneurship Program, what that looks like and what he's been involved in. You can see for our Business and Entrepreneurship course, you know, down at the bottom is the logo of Evolve Workplace, which is kind of our key supporter, that's where our course is located, and you can see there on the screen some of the other partners that support our work. And so Quinn, I'll let you kind of talk about your fall experience and what the spring holds for you.
I am Quinn Shannon, I'm a junior at South St. Paul. I'm part of the Business and Entrepreneurship Program, and this past semester, we have gotten the opportunity to work with Hayworth Advertising and Marketing, and work with them to create the Dick's Sporting Goods Back to School Program, or Campaign. And so we've been working on that, we've been learning about interviews, cover letters, kind of all aspects of business. And in the spring, I am going to be at an internship called The Garage, which is recording music artists and...
And Mr. Kush, is it okay if we ask a couple of questions while the students are still here with us?
Right, we're under clock, Dr. Webb.
Because our board members rarely get to talk directly to students, so I'm sure they've got a couple for Quinn.
Yeah. Anything for Quinn? Because I have one.
I do too.
Yeah. So, music is a big deal at my house. What will you be doing at The Garage?
I will be working a camera, recording any artist that comes and performs, and then we also get the chance to actually work in a studio and like record music or record music videos, so.
That is so cool.
That's wild, that's cool.
Man. How many, so how many hours a day of your school day do you work in this program?
I leave my, I leave South St. Paul High School at about 11:45, and then go to Evolve Workplace for this class at about 12:45, and I'm there until about 3:00.
Okay.
About two and a half hours.
Okay. Yeah, and Evolve Workplace is cool in itself, with the number of businesses all under one roof, so they get exposed to many businesses, not just one or two. I was wondering, when I show up to the tri-district courses, what I see is a new level of excitement of the kids that are in the classes. So when I walk into the healthcare class or into the business class, can you talk about, is there, do you feel different in a traditional high school class, and when you walk into the Career Pathways class, does it feel different for you?
It does. I definitely look forward to this class most out of my day. It is, it is the most exciting because I've always been interested in business and advertising, so getting the chance to work with Hayworth was incredible and so much fun. So it definitely feels different than being at a normal class and learning about math or history and learning about business.
And I think the piece, one of the pieces I would add too, and Quinn didn't bring this up, but I'll make sure I will, is the Monday, Monday the 10th of January, we had the opportunity, or the students had the opportunity, to bring on to some of the leadership at Dick's Sporting Goods at Hayworth. So we had the VP of Media Communications and one of the directors for, oh, sorry, and one of the directors of Influencer Relations for Dick's, along with some of the leadership at Hayworth, talking about, students presenting their proposal, you know, their thoughts, their proposals for the Fall 2022 Back to School Campaign as it related to media marketing and utilization of influencers. And Quinn was a big part of that presentation, so.
Cool. So Quinn, how has this opportunity with Career Pathways changed your belief system about education and what learning needs to be about? Or has it changed that?
It has. I think it definitely has shown me that you can learn with a little more fun. This class has been a blast, I've made so many new friends, and I absolutely love my teachers, and they make the class fun, but they still get their lecture across, and we still learn, and it has, it's definitely...
Kind of changed your thought process. That's great, that's great.
Are the businesses that are the partners in this, do they, are they involved in the class piece of it?
Yeah, towards the beginning of the semester, we would have presenters come in, and they'd kind of talk, and kind of talk about their business and how they started and what they're about, so yes, they were part of the class.
Quinn, Quinn, I have one more question.
Two more programs that we're going to have, oh, sorry.
I'm just curious if you have any thoughts about continuing your education after high school?
Yes, I do plan on going into a college, I'm not sure where at yet, but I do plan on going to college.
And what would your major be today?
Either business or music.
Okay. Very cool.
Thanks.
Or both.
Yeah, they're showing you, you can do both.
Nice, so.
Thank you, Quinn.
Thanks, Quinn.
All right. Going ahead to our Healthcare Careers in Medicine Program, into which Abby Roseburg, if you want to come up, I think this is a familiar face in Abby, I understand she was just here. And so, just a little bit of a pivot that we made this year within our healthcare course. We previously had been onsite at Training House in Twin Cities Orthopedics over in Eagan there, but, you know, when schools shut down, their business picked up, and they said, you know, Ben, we need our space back. And so fortunately, our friends at Inverhills Community College and their Allied Health Program welcomed us to their, to their site with open arms, and so we've been able to collaborate with them. So Abby, if you want to talk about your experience.
Hi, so I'm Abby Roseburg, I'm a senior at South St. Paul, and I absolutely just want to start off by saying I love this program. I, ever since I was little, I knew I wanted to go into the healthcare field, and I never knew that, I never knew the resources I kind of had at South St. Paul until I saw this healthcare program. And so for the first, like, semester kind of, we worked, we work on terminology and anatomy, and my favorite part is that we have speakers come in from all aspects of the healthcare field. We've had nurses, dentists, just anything you can think of, we've had those speakers come in, and it's just, I think, such a big learning experience to see actual people come, and like, they've experienced, they've been in the field, and they've like, you know, gone through things, and like, seeing them speak about what they've gone through has like really changed, like, my aspect of all, like, learnings and stuff like that, so it's, it's a pretty good program, and I would really, really recommend it for anyone. Not even, like, my teacher said this in the beginning, not even if you are, if you know that you want to go into the healthcare field, even just do it, because it lets you know what you like and what you don't like, and if you do want to go in the healthcare field, and if you don't want to go in the healthcare field. And kind of like what Quinn said, we also have worked on resumes and cover letters, and just, our teachers have set us up so much in the path to business, and learning how to, you know, create those jobs and get those jobs, and be in a professional setting. So it has, I've learned a lot from it.
That's great.
You okay if we ask you a few questions?
Of course, of course.
Anywhere you're stepping to, what are you doing this spring?
Yeah, so for the internship, now, I am going to be inter- internshiping at Woodwinds Hospital, and I already had my orientation there, and I chose to volunteer in the emergency department.
Oh, wow.
Wonderful.
Very cool.
First.
You like to be on your feet.
Yes.
And do a lot of running. Any questions?
Abby, going through the healthcare program at the same time that the pandemic is like so thoroughly taxing the healthcare industry, how's that changed your perspective of that experience?
I, it, you know, because these, they come in and they speak to us, and they have, they, all of them had different points on what they think about COVID, right? And so, it honestly made me have so much empathy for them because of what they go through, and it really changed like my thinking of it, like what these people have to go through every day. Like, I had nurses come in that are working in these units, and every day, like, they're explaining what they have to go through, what they have to see, like, families not being able to, you know, come and talk, and like, just them having to be that person in place of a family member, that kind of what hit me hard, is like them being in that place for families. So it definitely changed my perspective, because, you know, we don't, us students, we go to school every day, obviously we're wearing masks and everything, but we don't get to see what's going on in these hospitals, what, how people are getting sick, and I think that really helps, because, you know, there's some kids that don't have enough education on it, I think. And so that, I think, really helps, seeing how much of an impact COVID has had on people, and it really helped me get a different perspective on it, so.
That's great, thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
You know what my question's going to be, I think, don't you?
Yeah.
Okay, you have an answer for me.
What am I planning on doing?
Exactly.
Yes, so I am actually committed to Augsburg University for soccer, and then I'm going to be majoring in PA, Physicians Assistant.
Wonderful. Good for you. Congratulations.
Yes, so that's another reason why this program has helped me so much, and like, I was going back and forth from, do I want to do nursing, do I want to do Physicians Assistant, and like I said before, like, I had no idea what I exactly wanted to do, but this program actually led me to knowing that I wanted to become a Physicians Assistant.
That's wonderful. That's wonderful.
I would love to see where you're going to go in your life.
I know.
You have such good energy.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Dr. Webb?
So the day I showed up, about a month ago, they had a guest speaker in who was a nutritionist, and she has now created kind of her own business, her own standalone. She did work for an organization, but now has gotten so much traction and so popular and sought after, she just runs her own consulting as a nutritionist, and now coaches high-end athletes and all the rest. So that was one example of a speaker, you mentioned a couple of others. Can you share with us your favorite person that came in, was there one person that stood out?
Yes, and I can't remember his name off the top of my head because that was a while ago, but he was a well-known doctor, and...
Was that Ed?
He...
The commissioner?
No, he was an older, he was older, and he's really well-known, but I forgot his name, sorry about that. But I'll tell you a bit about what he came in, and what was different about him is he touched points on racism and public health, and what women are going through, what pregnant women are going through, and it was kind of just like a news flash for me, because he had all these stats and went over them with us, and you know how it's kind of like you see other doctors are coming in and the nurses are explaining, like, oh, they're every day, but then you have him come in, and it's like, whoa, like, he's touching on topics that normally people are uncomfortable talking about. And so it was just very cool to see how he did all of his work through the years, how he tied in these topics with healthcare. And then at the end, actually, he sung a song for our whole class. And it was just talking about peace and just how healthcare can, like, help, like, how important healthcare is, pretty much, and how it ties in, and I think what drew me out to him is just that he really portrayed that people are people, and they're not always just a body, they have a soul, and that is what I think stood out the most to me, is because he touched on more important things than just the anatomy, I guess, so.
Wow. Oh, how great.
He was amazing.
How impactful, huh?
Yeah, you won't forget that.
I was, I was emotional, actually, me and my teacher both, so.
Yeah. My question too was around speakers, you know, as a mental health professional, did they have a mental health practitioner, psychologist, psychiatrist come in?
I don't think we've had one of those yet, but...
Oh, that might be an idea.
Yes, that is a good idea. But I know that we have, like, touched on it in class.
Great.
Our teachers have touched that, on that in class, so, but that would be a good idea to have.
Yeah, wonderful, well, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Good luck to you.
Thank you. We welcome any and all connections that all partners are able to make, but just to clarify, I mean, that was Dr. Ed Ellinger, Dr. Ellinger is the former Commissioner of Health for the state of Minnesota. Yeah, that was Ed, and he's been, he's been a great presenter in our course for the last three years. And what Ed does for us is really talk about just about healthcare, but he talks about health, and not just from an individual, the health of an individual, but the health of communities and the region and the state.
And disparities, it sounds like.
What's that?
And disparities.
And disparities, yep, absolutely he does, and yeah, and we'll continue to engage with Ed on a variety of fronts and in some other ways too. So, last but not least, I've got Domingo Ridley, he's going to join us to talk about our transportation program. Again, you can see by the logo and by the underline at the top, North American Trailer is, again, our big supporter, our courses are hosted down at North American Trailer in Inver Grove Heights. You get a sense here of who are some of the partners that we work with, some new ones that we added this year, some old ones from the past. And Domingo, I'll let you kind of talk about your fall and yours, and what you're looking forward to this spring.
Hello, Ray.
Hi. Welcome.
I'm Domingo, I'm a junior from South St. Paul, and I'm in the Transportation and Technologies part of the program. I think it's actually really amazing, because before I knew this was like an option, I was kind of like going through school as, kind of just like thinking, whatever, I'm just going to get through this and find a trade school that I want to do or something. And then I randomly saw this while I was applying for classes, and I was like, okay, this seems interesting, transportation, didn't know what it was, no explanation, I was just like, I'll do it.
Sign me up.
I had no idea, because I signed up for classes late too, that was the best part. So I was, I was surprised, I was surprised that I even got in, because everybody was like, you needed like a reference and all of that, and I'm like, I just, I put my name on there. No, so, but this class is really good. I've always, I've always loved cars, and I've loved like engines, I, when I was younger, I used to like play a game with my mom where I would like name the brands of cars that we drove by and all of that. And this kind of just opened up my, my passion, I guess, for like the automotive side of the trade, which is good in a way.
For sure.
But my, I guess my love for all of that started when I was really young, because my father was a mechanic and a welder, so he did a lot of like home stuff, and he was really good at it, and that's, I had some previous knowledge, but, so we learned just the basics around tools and how to work with all of that. And our, like, first little project was, they'd contacted our teacher and was like, so there's this old truck axle that we don't need anymore, you guys can tear it apart. There was any, the whole thing, that was the only thing they told us. So we just got to tearing apart a whole rear truck axle. It took like three days and like five of us.
Wow.
And the rest started on, Sisk also got a trailer that he later sold for a decent amount of money, actually, because he did a really good job. We replaced a whole, a whole axle, and repaired it, actually, which was pretty cool.
Yeah.
Um, what else am I supposed to talk about?
Have you had an in-depth interview?
Oh, ooh, okay, okay, so, yeah, sorry. We worked extremely closely with North American, their CEO, oh, what was his name?
Spencer?
Spencer, yes. Spencer is an amazing guy and very passionate. He, he came down to talk to us a few times, but it was really enjoyable. But I'm working, I'm gonna, on the 7th, I start working there Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday.
Oh, wow.
From 1:00 to 6:00.
Whoa.
I'm switching it from, so I work at Culvers right now, and I'm glad to say this is my last week. I've been working there for nine months, and it was, it's been a struggle. I've wanted to leave there forever. But yeah, I'm looking forward to this, this new job is gonna hopefully open up a whole new career path and a whole new future with a whole lot more money.
For sure. Well, congratulations. That's great. That's just, I love hearing this. Wonderful. Any questions, board?
So do you go to classes in the high school, like till noon, or?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, so...
No, that's okay, it just...
Yeah, so everybody in tri-district, we, we usually leave at 12:00.
Okay.
And we have until 1:00 to get there.
Okay.
So we all like take time to get lunch and stuff.
Yeah, do you like that freedom?
Oh, yeah. I always look forward to 12:00. As soon as, as soon as fourth hour ends, I'm gone, not there anymore, I walk straight out the door.
Congratulations.
I waste no time. So one time I ran, I was like, I need to get out of here.
Have you thought of stand-up comedy?
A little bit, a little bit.
But that says a lot about the program, you know, that you leave school and you're so excited to go to more work.
Yeah, I'm really looking forward to it, too.
Yeah, that's really cool. Best of, best of luck and good wishes.
Thank you.
Yeah, Dr. Webb?
Bill has to ask his part.
Oh, Bill, yeah.
Of course, you know what my question is, Domingo.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm just, I'm probably going to go to a trade school, but they, at the truck shop, I'm going to be a truck tech, so I will be working on the actual semi-trucks. So I think after a year, they said they'll, they can send me to a school for like a certain type of engine build, and I could specialize in that specific diesel engine.
Wow.
So that's probably what I'll end up doing.
And those jobs, I mean, they're looking all the time. I see those signs everywhere.
They will snatch you up.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
They'll be in high demand. Dr. Webb, you had a question?
Yeah, it was, it was our Chamber of Commerce that right out of the chute said, this is a hot area, you're in a trucking hotbed in this area.
Right.
And you do something with transportation in the tri-district and support all the businesses that are just stealing employees from each other to try to survive, so it's a way to go. I'm just wondering if you could give us just a couple of minutes of the inside, because you hear North American Trailer, you kind of think of it like a trailer behind your car or something, but it's, it's pretty cool inside and in the shop, can you just take us in the shop for a minute?
Yeah.
So what is that like?
So the first shop they ever took us in was the, the trailer shop. So that's where they fabricate, and so they take in trailers that are either damaged or just like in need of maintenance, so they'll like fabricate new panels or...
This isn't just your, your little trailer behind your car.
No, like the big, like, semi-truck trailers.
Oh, semi-trailers.
These are the 18-wheeler.
I'm thinking little.
Yeah, this is the real deal.
Yeah, it's the 18-wheelers.
So keep going, sorry to interrupt.
Oh, you're fine. But yeah, so they took us to that shop first, and we, we didn't even get to do anything in there, honestly, but someone actually got an internship in there too.
Oh, wow.
So I'm, I'm gonna probably bother him every once in a while. We start at the same time.
Where else did you go?
Oh, okay, and then, so they have a tank shop too, and those are the trailers that hold, you know, like, like gas.
Liquid, the round ones?
Yeah, yeah, like coffee for whatever reason. All of that stuff. I actually learned that like, they have like a process of de-gassing, and that takes like four to five hours sometimes, so that was pretty interesting. And then one time, there was a broken trailer, and it just, the undercarriage of it was completely ripped open, and I, no one knew how, not even the workers, we asked everyone. That was a pretty interesting part of that. And then the truck shop was home to me. I saw all of the open hoods and fangirled. Just loved it.
Oh, that's so great.
Yeah, the three shops are really cool, they have a really nice break room, too.
It's important.
They've got like a million microwaves. Everybody there is really nice, too. Every shop has their own office, which is a very interesting part of it, but the tank and trailer shop share an office technically, that's also interesting. The truck shop has its own, and they're either really grumpy or really happy. Learned that the hard way.
Sounds like real life, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you have a mentor? Do they give you a mentor, somebody that you follow around?
So, yeah, so they're going to give me a mentor for like, I think they said maybe a month.
Oh, okay.
And then after that, I have to figure it out on myself.
Yeah.
So I'm looking forward to it, I'm probably going to struggle for a while, which is okay, that's learning. But I'm, I think that's about all my knowledge.
Thank you so much.
That's great. Thanks so much.
That's great, congratulations.
Yeah, best of luck to you.
Thank you so much, Domingo. Mr. Kush, will have you finish. Yeah, and, and so, you know, I work with Tim Caneley, who's our instructor over at South St. Paul, he works with us on the Intro to Urban Ag, excuse me, Intro to Urban Education Program, not Urban Ag, very different. Unfortunately, working with Tim, we just couldn't find a student that was available tonight to talk about, to talk about that program, but that is, you know, our partner there is Metropolitan State University, and our students, you know, working with Mr. Schmidt and some of his colleagues, connecting with the teachers in our district, so that students can kind of have a, oh, I think we'd be hard pressed to call it a student teaching experience, but like a student teaching-like experience, or, you know, something that's in line with the clinical hours that we do, that we all do as teachers in our first couple of courses at the university level. And so with that, you know, that kind of ends, you know, my goal is always is to try to let the students do the talking, but if there are questions that you all have for me, I'm more than happy to answer. Yes?
How many students in total participate?
How many students in total, um, participate?
I want to say we are, we're at around seventy-five, seventy, seventy-five, somewhere in there.
Between the three districts.
Between the three districts, right, right. You know, I, I, I won't lie, COVID was a little bit tough on our programs. Um, you know, so much of, uh, of what I think, you know, attracts students to the programs are, you know, not just the coursework in the fall, but the internships in the spring in particular. And as you can imagine, you know, the impact that COVID had, not just on healthcare, uh, but on a lot of our other partners, too. We saw, you know, kind of a, a a retraction of some of the opportunities that we had for our students, you know. La, last year, we were still able, we were still able to get it, find, you know, internships for every student. But because of the limited nature of, of some of what we were able to do, you know, we just, you know, students weren't able, we weren't able to share some of these stories. Um, just because they, they weren't happening. You know, healthcare, as you can imagine, was shut down pretty, uh, pretty significantly. And interestingly enough, you know, some of our transportation partners, they said, well Ben, people aren't eating in restaurants, so we're not shipping. People aren't driving their cars, so we're not moving oil. All the, you know, just the, really, you know, for me, it's just continued great learning to be like, oh, you know, I never really thought about it that way. Here we have a, you know, a healthcare crisis that's, that's really driving all kinds of sector, business sectors and industry sectors. So.
Great. Yeah, thanks so much for coming in.
Yeah, Dr. Webb.
Yeah, just a reminder, so, you know, we uh, because of our partnership with the Tri District, you know, we were paying a third of Ben's salary rather than a whole salary. For the kids, they get access to triple the course offerings than just going it alone. That's the, the inverse relationship that we have. We also want to just uh, celebrate our students for being here tonight. What a great job, what great experience. And just uh, thanks again, just quarterbacking out of the district office and Officer Learning. Chad, Chuck does a lot of touches at the high school as well, so just another thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Ben. And,
I have one last question for Ben.
To the community, our uh, high school registration for twenty-two, twenty-three is about to get started. So, uh, tenth graders and eleventh graders, uh, these CAPS programs will be part of that registration guide, including the new one, uh, Computer Science and Information Technology. And so we ask uh, our community members and our students to be aware of that in the next couple of weeks. Uh, and so if, uh, what some of our students said, uh, Domingo and Abby and Quinn, if that was intriguing and interesting, we hope you'll take a close look at that in the registration guide coming up.
Absolutely.
And so with that,
If I can, Chad, one last plug, the last plug I would make, and Chair Diaz, you brought it up. Community members, board members, you know, anybody who's watching and listening, if, if any of this is intriguing to you from a business perspective, if you feel that there are advantages that can be reaped from your organization. You know, we always kind of say, you know, if you're asking yourself, boy, what else could I accomplish with eight to ten hours a week by working with an intern? Or coming in to the fall and speaking with our students and sharing what it is that you do. You know, absolutely, you know, reach out to Dr. Webb or, you know, Dr. Webb, Ms. Brandecker, Mr. Schmidt, they all know how to get ahold of me. Uh, you know, we're always looking for partners to engage in a variety of ways. Um, and, and, and really any kind of, in any kind of space that they have to offer. I, I always say, you know, I'm a, I'm a former Spanish teacher, a former high school administrator. Uh, I don't know much about business and healthcare and transportation. We love to learn. Uh, and we love to bring in the experts in the field to, to, to share their knowledge and experience with our students, so.
Yeah, that's so great.
And so Ben and our students, the board would like to share their gratitude for being here tonight and speaking with this SSP Pride Go Packers band.
Bill Packers.
Thank you very much.
Thanks so much for coming.
See you again.
All right. I was waiting, like, who's gonna come up next, but uh, actually, as we get ready for our next presenter, we have uh, Principal Chukwuchaki, who's gonna give us an update on uh, What I Need Wednesday pilot program. Hi.
Hi, welcome. Sorry, Lisa just told me something and I wasn't paying attention. Uh, so Board Chair Diaz, Dr. Webb, um, school board and the greater school community that's watching on this. It is my pleasure to uh, talk about today about Packer Plus, What I Need Wednesdays. There we go. Uh, and, and this pilot program that we started in the fall, and, and so the idea tonight would be to just provide an update for you guys to understand what's happening uh, with What I Need Wednesdays. And in this presentation, we'll do a brief, I'll try to be brief, history of the program, the goals, the outcomes associated with the program, and then share some student data from trimester one and then some changes that we've made in trimester two. So, uh, the problem that, the problem or problems that we were trying to solve was we have students who fail one or more classes uh, in any given year that threatens their graduation status. So that's a big concern of ours. And, and to help the students, we don't have an intervention structure. What we had was, um, as soon as they, instead of catching them, as soon as they start to fall behind, we wait until the end of the trimester. So we wanted to create a structure that allowed us to help kids, so that we didn't have to wait till they failed courses, that we could catch them beforehand. We wanted to incentivize for some of our students, the, the idea of getting good grades. Uh, there are very few immediate incentives for getting good grades uh, in schools across the nation, right? We have National Honor Society and the Honors Breakfast. Uh, but that's once a year, so how do we incentivize that? And change the conversation from just passing to doing well. And then lastly, our teachers don't had, did not have uh, adequate time to meet and collaborate uh, together to improve student learning. So we were trying to solve those problems uh, with one program. Uh, so when we came to kids and, and failing, we did stuff like summer school and after-school credit recovery. And during the day, credit recovery and this thing called Packer Plus Check and Connect. Uh, and individual students are fantastic, individual teachers are fantastic for trying to help students. But none of it was structured and a lot of times it was after the fact. So it was too late for them. Summer school is, you know, if you fail first trimester of, of Spanish and you have to wait an entire s, year to take it in summer, it wasn't helpful. And then lastly, like for our teachers to help them create some meeting time, we rotated on a schedule that allowed them to meet for forty minutes per week. Which we realized is just not enough time for a student, for our teachers to work together. So, what were the results? Mixed at best, but without a structure in place for our student success. You know, our student success depended on many different factors. And we didn't have a, a structure to help them be successful. And so what we did, uh, and this was, right, the, many people were involved in the creating of this plan was uh, this Packer Plus, What I Need Wednesdays. We incentivized getting good grades, helping struggle, struggling learners in a really timely fashion every single week, uh, instead of waiting. Uh, we allowed the students to have input for what they need to be successful. And lastly, but not the least, we created some meaningful time for our staff to collaborate, so that they could continue to improve our students' experiences, which, is what we want. So, it looks like on Wednesdays, when we have Packer Plus, What I Need Wednesdays, the school day for our students starts at nine-thirty and all students with a C minus or less need to come to class uh, and attend Packer Plus. If you have a C or higher, uh, you have the option to do your work from home. Uh, so any student that wants to attend school, though, we've said, the school is open, you can come. Right? But those with a C minus or lower are required to be in school. Uh, and one of the benefits that we really like about this program is that the way we switched the, the start to nine-thirty, we still allowed busing for all of our students. And every student who comes to, to school on Wednesday still gets their two meals of breakfast and lunch. But really, it was about uh, trying to break up the big classes of thirty-three, thirty-five kids uh, and give some kids some individual help. So that's what the day looks like for our students. What it did for us in the, the late start or the nine-thirty start is allowed us to have some really meaningful conversations with our teachers. So we, we built in their time. There's, their day still starts at seven o'clock. Uh, but we created some meaningful time for them to, to collaborate and meet. And usually, they have three meetings. One is a, a grade level meeting or what we call a bar meeting. One is a rotating meeting from a staff learning, MYP, IB meeting, subject area, IB self-study. And then we're working on priority standards, and so they always have time every Wednesday to do their priority standards work. And, and really, it, it allows our teachers to um, come in, have these meetings and get ready for the school day. So the goals for us were pretty simple, right? Less students failures, working towards zero F, supporting students as soon as they need the help, instead of waiting for them to fail. Uh, creating time for our teachers to continue their bar work, which is building assets and reducing risk. And really, that means looking at the whole student, not just uh, individual pieces of the student. Uh, and then giving students some voice about what they need. They are actually able to tell us, hey, even if I have As and Bs, I need to come in to get some additional support. So they're, they're practicing uh, using their own voice to tell us what they need. So, since launching uh, Packer Plus, What I Need Wednesdays, and we started it in October, October sixth, actually, we reduced the number of failing grades in trimester one by fifty percent. So, the number of kids who are failing, the first week we did Packer Plus to the last, uh, the last week, uh, we reduced the number of Fs by fifty percent. So, that's, I mean, that's pretty awesome when you think about it. We reduced the number of students who needed to come to school on Wednesdays by twenty-six percent, or a hundred and thirty-six kids. So even though kids could still come, we had kids who were really Cs was gonna get me to be able to work from home, and there was real incentive there, and we watched it happen. And then, lastly, the, and, and the big one for us was really looking at, trying to compare data. So, we looked at, how did our kids do pre-pandemic, so in twenty-nineteen, and twenty-six percent of our kids failed one or more classes. And last year, during the, I, I used to say the height of the pandemic, but I don't know where that height is anymore, right? Uh, so the first part of the pandemic, uh, forty-seven percent of our kids failed one or more classes in trimester. So, uh, in this trimester, it was down to twenty-two percent. So I'm not pumped to say here, like twenty-two percent, that's good for us, but twenty-two percent is a huge number for us when you think about uh, making greater gains than we did pre-pandemic and helping our kids uh, be successful. So that's the hard data, right? The hard data of less Fs, uh, when we started the program, less students had to come into the school if they, if they didn't want to. And actually, our failure rate was lower than pre-pandemic uh, times. So, that's the hard data. Some of the soft data that I, I want to talk about, so what do we know, right, since launching Packer Plus? Well, we know that our, our, we have stakeholders who really like it, right? And it was uh, highlighted in the stakeholder report final that you guys received uh, from um, the group that's doing this superintendent search, that What I Need Wednesday uh, was mentioned thirteen times in, in a really opened-up dialogue kind of convers, kind of survey. So, uh, we have stakeholders that believe in it.
It was mentioned in a positive way.
Yeah, yes, yes, mentioned, sorry. Mentioned in a positive way. Yep. Uh, what I, we've heard from our teachers, uh, especially our ninth grade teachers, are students know exactly where they are. Uh, and that's not typical with the ninth grader, right? If you ask them how they're doing, they're gonna tell you they're doing great, right? Because they are at that moment when you ask them, even though they may be failing all six of their classes, right? But our students know exactly where they stand. And not just grade-wise, but the percentage and what they need to do in order to improve. So, uh, and we really heard that. Uh, we've heard students talk about C minus being more like an F, and it happened actually in my connections class, when I had a kid who's taking a physics class be really angry and saying, look, I'm even failing physics now. And when I walked by, I kind of looked over his shoulder and just said, hey, you have a C minus, and might as well be an F. Right? I mean, that's kind of the, the, the culture is shifting, the language is shifting for our kids that a C mi, if, a C minus is an F, let's, I'll take it. Right? I, I'll take that. Um, and so we've heard kids really talk about, like, the C minus now is the grade they don't want to get. Uh, and then our students in activities have shared with me, they really appreciate the later start time. On Wednesday, uh, and I, I, I shared with you guys earlier, I'll share with the public. Uh, I was at the Johnson-South St. Paul uh, hockey game when one of the students asked if I could call an emergency Packer Plus Wednesday, because he needed a couple more hours to sleep in. And I get it, I didn't fully understand what kids would talk about, uh, but having two varsity athletes right now, I understand. They get back from a game, right? They have a seven o'clock game, they get back hopefully at nine-thirty. You know, by ten o'clock, they've eaten their, their third bre, their third dinner. Right? And they're too wired to just go right to bed. And so, uh, we have really seen it on Wednesdays, when we have that later start, just kids are coming in, they're more enthused, they're awake, they're ready. My wife tweeted me, or texted me about our own son, about how great it is, and he's a human in the morning on Wednesdays, instead of not, right? So it's, it is, our, our students have said to us, we really appreciate that later start. And so for trimester two, we, uh, we surveyed students, families, um, and teachers and said, what are, what are some things that we should, make sure that we keep and what are some things that we need to change? And the big change for us came from uh, reading the, the, the data from teachers, students and families. It's one thing that they, all three groups agreed on was that allowing juniors and seniors to come in only for the classes that they need a support on for Wednesday. So beforehand, in trimester one, we said, if you're coming in for one class, you're coming in for all classes. Um, and it was uh, uh, from a junior who wrote in the survey about, when I go to college, I'm only going to see the professor of the school, the, of the class that I need help in. Not all of my professors. That really caused us to take a pause and say, maybe that's something that we should try. So, we're giving juniors and seniors that, the, the ability to come in for the one class or the two classes that they need instead of the entire day. And honestly, they, uh, I had a kid in my connections class, thank, thank us as a staff for listening to what they had voiced their concerns about. So, very cool. So that's something that we're doing differently for trimester two. For next year, when we design the program, we allow the first three or four weeks of each trimester. Uh, we don't jump right into Packer Plus, What I Need Wednesdays. We actually give the kids some time to get into their class and, and the rhythm of the classes. And what we discovered this year was, that's a disaster that we should avoid uh, at all costs, because um, some of the really good habits of getting your work done and managing your time and doing all the things, the soft skills that we're teaching our, our kids fell to the wayside in the four weeks that we were not in Packer Plus. And so, on the first week of having it, we saw six hundred and ten kids needed to come in, and that was the highest number that we've had uh, since we first started running the program. So, uh, we really are gonna look at that next year and say, do we just, you know, maybe the first three weeks of the year, we get into this cycle and then just for the rest of the year, run Packer Plus, uh, as is. So that's something that we'll talk about uh, from, from now on. So, just, I, I want everyone to know, I'm really proud of the work of the staff and the students, uh, what they did in trimester one and the success of the Packer Plus. And it really required some out-of-the-box thinking and our educators, students and, and the families at home uh, really rose to the challenge uh, to allow us to do it. So, questions?
Yeah. We had, we had heard this presentation uh, before in the committee of the hall meeting and just peppered you with comments and questions. So, folks, anything else we'd like to add?
Wendy?
Yes. Yeah, Chuck, my question is, you, you had mentioned that students could give you input as to what, what they wanted to help them to be successful. Anything specific that you could share with us that students gave to you?
Yeah, so the, the really big thing that we saw, so we have this decreasing number of kids who needed to come in uh, across the trimester. Uh, because they're getting Cs or higher. But what we saw was the attendance rate kind of moved up in that we were seeing more kids than expected. And these were kids who were saying, I need additional support. Uh, but I can't, or I, I, I'm not comfortable asking a question in front of thirty-five classmates. But I will, even though I have an A or a B, I'm gonna come in and get that additional support. And it was really cool to see that piece uh, happen. And it was really, uh, with some of our juniors and seniors, really high flyers, who they just needed to sit down and understand something in IB math that I can't, right, I can't help them with, or IB chem or something like that. And so it was allowing them to advocate for themselves and really have a voice in their own education. Uh, that was probably one of the coolest things. I actually think we're gonna see more of our juniors and seniors come in and, and go on Wednesdays when they have this flexibility of being able to just come in for one or two classes. I think some of what we did is we built a, a barricade and said, if you come in for one, you have to come in for all. So some of our students didn't come in, even though they needed that additional support. So.
Great, thank you.
Yes, Monica.
I mean, have you gotten, you know, feedback or interest from other districts interested in like, because this is such an out-of-the-box, you know, idea. And I know when I've just casually referenced it to people, they're all like, tell me more. How does that work? And so how, and how are we sharing that, our successes, our challenges, moving forward?
Yeah, that's a phenomenal question. And yes, we have, we are, um, we, and I say we because it is all of us, um, our, our, I get, I get calls or emails weekly about this program. Uh, and it, I'm gonna be honest with you, uh, it starts with, how did you get your board to do this? Right? That is the number one question that I get from principals, like, how did you finesse it or swing by it or, you know, and, and, um, but there are schools in, a, finesse it or swing by it or, you know, and, but there are schools across the country that have asked us about what we did, our data. And now that we have data and we're starting to share it, people are asking even more questions. So we are a part of the Building Assets, Reducing Risks, the collaborative, which has schools all over the country, and they constantly are asking like, how did this happen? And I have to be honest with you, as a principal, it starts with, right, how did you get your soup to say yes? And how did you get your board to say yes? That's the big question that everyone wants to know. And I think we had some really important data to share.
Can I go next? So when we came out of the pandemic in the school year last year, if you can remember the end of last year, we were on a four-day hybrid schedule already. So we got into our summer planning sessions, and I opened up the door for the principals to say, hey, if you are thinking about anything different for September, we need to know by July 15th. And Chuck huddled with his team, got in, dug in, and it was right about July 15th that said, here's what we're thinking, and here's the direction we'd like to go. Well, you know, we had a lot of rigorous leadership team meetings, and then it did still have to get approval by the board. And it took courage from the board. If you think back to last August, when this hadn't happened before, and when it's brand new and it's never been seen before, there are always going to be parents that are going to come after you as board members saying, hey, we're concerned about this. So I just want to remind you of last August, and I want to thank the board again for having the courage to hang in there, because you can see the student results now. It wasn't the quantitative piece of data, but Chuck said tonight that students know where they are at.
Yeah.
I just saw a survey, like, half the people in the country can't tell you what their credit card interest rate is. So they're not paying attention to where they're at financially, really. If our kids can pay attention to where they're at on a week-to-week basis, how huge of a win is that?
For sure. Unintended.
And the Metro Superintendent's Group that I was in asked me to present on this so the other 40 superintendents could hear the framework and some of the story. And the biggest lesson is, can you start early? Can you get with your team? Chuck and his team rolled up their sleeves and planned well for a long time throughout the whole pandemic, shifting models six times just last year, in and out of distance and hybrid and full instruction. So it takes teamwork, takes a lot of collaboration and leadership. So thank you to the board, thanks to the secondary administration.
Yeah.
Yeah, and a lot of lessons all the way around. I think communication was one. But look at this switch we had talked about earlier in the other meeting of, that change is hard, and it's a little scary. And when you're not sure what the outcome is going to be, you know, we had a lot of contact with community members and families and, you know, and you were able then to do a survey for everybody, how is it going? What can we do differently? And shift right in the middle. And I think that pivoting in the middle of something, that flexibility really shows that everybody was engaged in this process. So thanks.
Yeah. And thank you honestly for giving us a shot. I mean, truly. It is courageous of you guys to say, hey, we're going to try something different. Hasn't been tried before, right, that I know of. And it's, there are some days where it's terrifying. But again, you want to talk about culture shift, eighth graders are talking about it for next year. Are we going to have it again for next year? Right? And we're already, our eighth graders are already thinking like, I got to get Cs or higher. It's an amazing concept to think about when you want to talk about education. So.
If I can also kind of highlight a couple of things that came out of our discussion together before, you really referenced the pre-pandemic at 26% and then the post-pandemic at 22%. I think that's really selling you short because that's ignoring the learning gap that occurred in that pandemic year. When we look at other districts across the metro area, the percentage of students behind on credit, the percentage of students who are failing, not only are they not seeing a decrease in failure rates, they're seeing a significant increase. So for you, like, to eclipse that in this moment and to show that, I think that number specifically is really selling the success of this program short of just how tremendous that movement is. So I just, I wanted to circle back and highlight that, that I was thinking about since the little Cow meeting. But the other thing is, this is a primary target for students to avoid failure and success. One of the benefits that I've seen in my own household is teaching students their own time management, even for the students who are already successful. High school is a lot of supervised work, and that is not what life after high school looks like. And to give students a taste of that while they're still being supervised in the safety net of parents, teachers, collaborators through this process, teaching that lesson earlier on, I think will benefit all of our kids. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
And I had a request too at the Cow meeting, and I hope that we can make this happen, is I would love to have a couple of secondary staff members come and just share their own personal experiences with it, just to hear what it's like for them, you know, and what their day looks like.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. And I said, Nikki, like I said in the Cow meeting, right, if they weren't behind this, I would have ended it a long time ago, or there'd be a new principal at the high school.
Any other thoughts, questions? Thank you.
One question, the thing that came out, many things jumped out at me, but the C minus might as well be an F. Is that an increase in the expectations of the students of themselves as a result of this program, or was it always there and this just gave them the tools to kind of bear it out? Or what are your thoughts on that?
Man, that's, wow. I just, I want to remind everyone, I'm not a psychiatrist or a psychologist, right? But I honestly think the incentive is what some of our kids need, right? The incentive to do a little bit better than just getting by is what we're really seeing, right? That's the big change. You know, most kids would say, hey, D minus is fine, right? If I'm not going to college, I'll take a D minus, right? But that's not, that's not what we're hearing. They want to be able to do their work and be an adult and, right, do all the things that adults do on Wednesdays and still get their work done. And so it's incentivizing just, I think, enough to do a little bit better, push a little bit harder, right? And that is what we're seeing, and it's really kind of exciting to see that. So it's not uncommon to walk over and see some of our students doing work at Black Sheep on Wednesdays, and when you go over there and just be like, oh, hey, you know, because they're feeling really good about it. And we just heard from three of our students that do the tri-district course, what was it that they were excited about? Leaving and feeling like an adult, like, yeah.
And still working.
Yes, and still working, yeah. So I think maybe all it did was incentivize just a little bit more, like, let's get a C minus, right? And there are some changes that we've talked about that we'll have to look at, is C too low? Do we raise that bar a little bit? Now that we've created that C minus is like an F, can we push them a little higher now? And that's something that we'll talk about as a staff and as a community. And it has a lot of upsides, but I want you to know that there are still some kids who maybe aren't being pushed as much as we need to push them. And so we have to figure out too, how do we pull in those really high flyers? But overall, I feel like this has been pretty successful. So thanks for trusting me.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And thank you publicly.
Thanks for taking the chance. All right. It's me. Next, we wanted to give you an update on the superintendent search. Last Wednesday, the board participated in a, with our search firm, MSBA, in an interview training. We went over the stakeholder report that Chuck had mentioned earlier, and that stakeholder report is actually on the website, on the school's website. And what that is, is the results of the survey that we had sent out. And there were 221 responses. And we were really just impressed with the community. There were parents and teachers who had responded. And I think for us, the most impressive part is that what the board had gotten together on and discussed what we were looking for in the new superintendent search was the exact same thing that the community was looking for. Our search firm said that they have never seen that happen, where the community and the board were at 100% match. So it just really shows that you were able to come to us to talk to us about what you were looking for, what you were needing. You did, you know, filled out the response. The other thing that we looked at was talking about the decision on what, in what other capacity we were going to have stakeholder input. So the personnel committee is going to get together and make some more decisions about that, and we'll bring you another update. So that is about the superintendent search. And there were no public listening session submissions this week. So Dr. Webb?
All you. Thank you. Good evening again. What, a couple of great presentations tonight.
For sure.
Our career pathways, kids, they always steal the show. All kids coming in steal the show. But if you go back five years ago, when we didn't have that program in place to now, it's amazing. So, and we know that, you know, as great as our IB diploma program is, it isn't for every kid. The IB diploma, full diploma, isn't necessarily for every student. So to be able to balance out a great top IB diploma program with career pathways to give kids the choice of both, how great is that? So we're going to go into our presentation here tonight, and our superintendent update for the 24th is as follows. Tomorrow night, 6 o'clock, we have virtual open houses and video tours for kindergarten enrollment. So it's that time already, if you can believe it, to look ahead for next year. We have a link here on the screen, but they're also on our website, if you'd like to participate in kindergarten enrollment, virtual open houses. We're going to be participating again this year in the Minnesota Student Survey, and that includes students in grades five, eight, nine, and 11. And it's a great way for students to be able to report kind of the backstory about how they're seeing their lives play out. And I think it's especially good right now in the middle of the pandemic still to be hearing directly from our students and hearing what they need. Speaking of needs, we continue to need subs. If you're interested and if you're looking for a substitute to be a substitute teacher or staff member, we could use you in our cafeterias, in our kitchens, in our maintenance services, in our, as teachers in our school districts. So if you're looking for a job, especially for the parents that maybe have kids that have just gone back to school, and you want to be doing something middle of the day, let us know, and we'll put you to work and find something great for you. A few district highlights. Here we are celebrating Martin Luther King Junior Day with our Capoja first graders, a great photo here. We had our pen pals that were lifting up, that were in conversation with students in Spain, with one of our former graduates who's in Spain facilitating the other end of that back-and-forth conversation. So pretty cool. We are continuing to use our STEM focus, K-12, but here are our fourth graders at Lincoln Center practicing their coding by getting the robots moving around the media center. And just the care that always happens through our IB program and putting the I back in kind. Here's our Lincoln Center student ambassadors and our Capoja Student Council writing cards for hospitalized kids. We have a few upcoming calendar dates this coming, the 28th and 31st of January, there's no school for students. February 21st, again, no school, and March 11th and 14th as well. And we'll go back to you.
Great. Thank you. The next thing on our agenda is to approve consent. Consent agenda includes financial claims, bills payable, and our staffing report. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Great. Thank you.
Second.
Thanks, Wendy. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. And next up is policy review, and we don't have any policies for review this time. And so the next item are business items, and I'm looking for a motion to approve the budget revisions.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Great. Thank you. And for discussion, we have Brady here.
Can I just remind folks, we have a new finance director, still relatively new here in the district, Brady Hoffman. He's doing an outstanding job in just his first few months on the job. So welcome, Brady.
Yeah, we've kept you busy.
It's all good. A lot of fun. All right. So we have our first round of budget revisions for the 21-22 school year. The original budget was adopted back in June. So per statute, the school board is required to approve a budget before June 30th of the upcoming school year. Since that time, we've completed our FY21 audit. We've onboarded new staff and welcomed students for the 21-22 school year. And we've analyzed enrollment trends, reviewed our current year projections, and we've analyzed our budget to actual results from last year to look for areas where we maybe needed to tighten some things up within our budget. We had some changes in our budget assumptions. As we go through time, we learn more and we can refine those assumptions. When we adopted our budget, the legislature still wasn't quite finalized yet, so we didn't quite know exactly where we were going to land on our state funding. So we assumed a 2% increase, but we actually ended up with a 2.45% increase. So we've updated our revenue projections to incorporate the increase in the per pupil amount. Our actual enrollment itself does not have a change. We are still holding at 3,032 average daily memberships for the school year. We adjusted our federal revenues for updated allocations. So the federal government has granted additional dollars for different COVID support throughout this pandemic. So we've incorporated those revenues and expenditures. And then we've also adjusted some other state aids, like special education. So now that we're through the audit last year, we kind of know where things landed, and we can better tighten up those revenue projections for this current year. When we look at expenditures, we took into account those variances from the prior year audit to see how actual results fluctuated. And then we worked through our actual staffing. So now that the school year started, we know who we have where, what benefits have been elected, and where those costs are coming. And so we were able to update those salary and benefit expense budgets based on those known staffing changes. With our debt service fund back in November, the school board did approve issuing some refunding bonds that will save the district money over time, I believe about 1.8 million of savings to the taxpayers. So those bonds were issued in November. The refunding will take place here on February 2nd. So now we're just incorporating that activity within the budget. So it looks like a large change to the budget, but it's an in and out, and in the long term, it saves our taxpayers money. So here's the overall budget summary. So the first two columns represents the budget that was adopted back in June. So that's our revenues and expenditures by fund. So we have roughly $51.6 million of revenue and expense. The next two columns represent the revisions that is before the school board tonight for approval. And then the last column shows what those changes are. So based on those changes and assumptions, and we are increasing our revenues and expenditures in the general fund just over 600,000. And then when you look at the debt service fund line, that's where you'll see is about 14.7 million. Now we're adding a bond proceeds and then of a bond refunding payment. So in and outs. So we take the general fund and kind of look at what those revisions are in a little bit more detail. The first row under the original budget is final audit results. So whenever we adopted the budget, the audit wasn't final. So we had our projected fund balance starting point. Based on the other results, we came in better than expected. So this is just resetting our starting fund balance for those audit results. So we actually started the year with 6.1 million in fund balance as opposed to the 5.2. Working our way down the list, the enrollment adjustment is that increase in the state aid formula amount to 2.45%. We're incorporating 161,000 of additional federal funds that were allocated to Selene and Paul. The change in other revenues of 250,000 is the special ed estimate. The staffing costs went up about 206,000 based on where positions landed, where benefits were elected. There was the one-time retention stipend that the school board approved. And then there's also some other non-salary items. So this is a small amount, but it gets things in the right categories within our budget. So when we take a deeper dive, we can be a little bit tighter on our budget to actuals. This is another snapshot of the general fund. So now it breaks those fund balances down by the different categories. So we have restricted fund balances, which are items that are restricted by state statute. They can only be spent on certain things. And then we have our assigned and unassigned fund balance as well. So this is taking our starting point of June 30, 2021. And at the very bottom, when we went over our audit results, we came in at 11.91% fund balance. Our board policy is 12%. So we were just shy of that. So that's, we were very close on that mark. It walks across our revenues and expenditures, and then our, you know, kind of what that It walks across our revenues and expenditures and then our, you know, kind of what that change in fund balance is to then where we're projecting to end this year is at 11.04%. So still a little bit below our policy, but we're still making positive progress towards getting to our policy amount. And these are things that we work through in our budget process to make sure we're working towards meeting that board policy. Here's a look at that debt service fund, so here's where we rolled in the 2021 bond refunding, so 14.7 million of bond proceeds, and then the turnaround of the bond payment that is being made here in this next week to pay off the old debt, and then we'll have the new bonds on the books here for seven years. And like I said, that'll save our taxpayers 1.8 million dollars over the next seven years on their taxes. So our next steps is we're in the middle of working through our FY23 budget process. So part of doing budget revisions is this is also part of the, you know, as we move forward, where things are at. So we're working through all those assumptions and parameters in that budget process here, starting this week and moving on through the next couple of months. So that's where we are in our budget process. I will open it up for any questions or comments and do my best to answer those.
Great.
So, so thank you for all of this work. I mean, I opened up this document and I was very, it was very easy to read and clear, and I'm happy that our district is in seemingly a better fiscal position than we had anticipated last year when we were going through some of these conversations. But can you speak to a little bit, you know, the district is paid on a per pupil basis? That declining enrollment means you have less money, also means you need less things, but that also, since our budget is very personnel-heavy, that might mean fewer personnel. Can you walk through that a little bit?
Yep. So when we came into this school year, we did reduce about 79 or 80 ADMs, average daily memberships for students. So coming into this year, we knew we were going to have less revenue. We do our best to right-size, and, you know, based on the number of students we have, we have our class size norm. So you base your class sizes on, or the number of teachers you're going to have based on those class sizes. So we get those as tight as we can. Whenever you have declining enrollment, they don't all leave from the same class. So sometimes even though you're down 25 kids, it might not actually bump any class or grade out of the norm. So that's where the budget process comes in, and how do we find ways to offer all those right services and support our students in those needs? So we're currently, the revisions, this, you know, we're spot on on our enrollment targets. So the revisions were pretty much a wash. As we project out with declining enrollment, that is going to be less revenue. We take that into account. And that's where we look at those class size norms. We look at other funding streams, we look at every area in which we can right-size and reduce. And typically, we try and avoid the classroom as much as possible. About 80% of our budget is people and staff, and that's where we're a people-driven entity. So that's, you know, the hard thing that we have to figure out is what are all those right areas that we can touch on? So we work on those enrollment projections because those are the big benchmarking pieces we move forward about what's our revenue going to be and where does that put us with all of our staffing and all of our other support services? So we, enrollment is the key driver in a lot of it. And then the rest of the revenue side is determined by the state or by the taxpayers. So we don't have discretion about how much revenue we're going to get. The state sets the state aid, the taxpayers approve the levies, or some taxes are in state statute approved by the legislature as well.
Any other questions, comments?
Not at this time.
No? Webb?
Yeah, I would just add that, you know, the community was really helpful over the last month here or so, along with our, even our students and staff and filling out some information about what our kids need two years into the pandemic for, as we start budgeting for next year. So we have some federal funds as we go into our budget planning that we have to talk about and how to best allocate that. So we're compiling all those survey results right now. We've done a number of those stakeholder conversations to look at our assets as a community and also the gaps that kids need most right now. So we'll be sharing that, all that information in the weeks and months ahead. Okay?
Great. Thanks. Thanks, Brady.
Thank you.
And so to wrap that up, you took the motion on the. I took the motion, and now I need to. All those in favor? All those in favor? Say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries. Thanks for the reminder. And then the last thing that we have are board member reports and committee updates. And we'll start, done at the end with Mr. Aaron, Inspector Aaron.
Thanks for the warning. I just want to remind everybody that the basketball team has a home game against St. Thomas Academy on Thursday this week. I should say the undefeated South St. Paul basketball team. And also I want to not only thank, but show my support for Chad and Paul Miller for a very, very good transition. And anybody who can make it, I guarantee the gym will be warm on Thursday night. Thank you.
Monica?
Well, thank you for that reminder, Bill, because I will definitely, definitely try to make it. I went to a game and it just was so much fun. I'm a huge basketball nerd. For anybody who knows me, I will talk about basketball anywhere, anytime, anyplace. So that's a fantastic note. I also really enjoy theater. The theater this last weekend had a great showing with their one-act plays. And they always do such a creative job. It was just a difference of like short plays all, and it was just a phenomenal evening. So hats off to Mr. Holson and all the students who acted, directed, did, did all of the combinations, and that's it.
Also shouting out theater. They had a great weekend and always fun to see those productions. But I also want to give a shout out to a group of middle school moms who are helping out in some of the lunch and coordinating some supervision and just modeling great behavior in a middle school lunchroom, so. There we go.
Much needed. And I too just want to shout out basketball. I went to a game this season and I brought my hockey mom voice. And was just, I was just so pumped, and I think what I was pumped about were the blocks, in the slam the ball! And so I was doing my own shouting. It was awesome. Nikki?
I attended my first meeting of the community ed.
Is that it?
Community ed, tri-district. And it was, you know, there was like none of that when you first start on a new committee. Like, you know, awkwardness or, you know, I feel like I don't fit here, you know what I mean? And it was like just hitting the ground running. And people were welcoming, and we broke up into different subcommittees and did some really good talking about the use of the ESSR funds and where we'd like to see that happen. And then we came back together as a full group, and they're just doing such great work. I just left their, the meeting feeling just pumped and exhilarated about the work that they're doing to keep our communities thriving. So I really enjoyed that.
That's great. Thanks for the update.
Thank you. Well, I went to a basketball game too, but been enjoying spreading my activity time around, you know, there's hockey and gymnastics and swimming and all sorts of other things going on too, so. There was a lot last week, there's a lot this week, so I will emphasize what I've said for years, that that's the best entertainment dollar in town.
For sure.
The high school activities, so.
And Chris, it was good that you sat behind me and not in front of me.
That was strategic. Plucked that one through. I also went to the Minnesota School Board Association Annual Convention. Down at the Minneapolis Convention Center. It's a good opportunity to hear some new ideas and probably more than anything to network with other school boards and such around the state, so that was worthwhile. And I just want to take my turn to thank very much the staff of the entire district and all the efforts that they're going through to cover all of the absences and just the additional stress of the time that we're going through. You know, we really do appreciate everything that everybody's doing. We understand that it's very hard right now. And I just want to say thank you for all you've done to, mainly for the kids, and that's why we're all here, so thank you very much.
Yeah, and then working late for all of these activities. Yeah, really great point.
Absolutely.
Wendy?
Yeah, first I'd like to say I attended the one-act plays this weekend too. It was wonderful performances, and I want to put out a huge thank you to Mr. Holson because he lets students direct it and students to write the different one-act plays. And he allowed two of our former graduate students, Isabel and Luisa Hammond, each wrote a one-act play. And Mr. Holson presented it on the stage. It was really great because both of those former students are actually, they're attending college now and are also participating in the theater projects and classes right now at their universities. So thank you to Mr. Holson for that. And also, for the next, for the spring plays, the auditions are coming up already next week, so there's more information on the bulletin board near the auditorium for the Laramie Project Spring Play. So I know a lot of the students are interested in that, so there is more information available. And also, as I mentioned at the last board meeting, next Tuesday, February 1st, the Education Foundation Scholarship Presentation Program will be presented to our seniors at the secondary building so that they can prepare to apply for the scholarships that will be given out from the Education Foundation in the spring. So look forward to that. You'll get the pamphlet information and you do applications online. So looking forward to that. And also, I'm a member of the Senior Center here in South St. Paul at Central Square. And just as a reminder, on the first Thursdays of each month at the Senior Center, it's kind of a special little luncheon or snack or d'urv type opportunity. And next week, Thursday, February 3rd, it's tater tot hot dish day. So if any seniors are interested in coming for a treat, have some tater tot hot dish. It's from 11:30 until 1:00 in the afternoon, and donations are accepted and appreciated for the support of those programs, so. So thank you, and we look forward to seeing you, and I hope to also attend the basketball game this week. Looking forward to that. So, all right, thank you, and have a good day.
All right. So that's it for our agenda for tonight. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn our Monday, January 24th, 2022 meeting.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Great, thanks, Chris. Any discussion? And that motion carries. Meeting is adjourned at 7:23 PM. Thank you.